Good evening. This is the regular city council meeting for Tuesday, December 7th, 2021, and it is six o'clock. We will start the meeting off this evening. I will open the meeting and we will have a roll call of council members.
Doug Glassbell?
Present.
Dave Frank?
Present.
Barbara Bynum?
Present.
David Reed?
Present.
Anthony Russo, and he is not present at this time.
All right. And we do have a youth council member with us this evening?
Yep, we have Amy Scriffany representing our youth council this evening.
Good. The next item on our agenda will be the pledge of allegiance. And if you would, as we start this, let's remember those folks that we lost many years ago on this date.
I just wanted to make a quick note that Councilor Russo has joined us.
All right. Are there any changes to the agenda this evening?
Mr. Mayor, there are not.
This be a time for comment from the public. If anyone has a comment they would like to make or any item to discuss this evening, this be the time to do it. If it is a non-agenda item, you will have three minutes to speak and you'll need to come up to the mic, give your name and your address, and we'll take your comments. Is there anyone in the audience that would care to speak? I'd take a motion to approve the minutes of the previous meeting?
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the minutes of the November 15th, 2021 special council meeting and the November 16th, 2021 regular city council meeting as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Please, you want a roll call on that vote? All right, we'll have a roll call vote.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
And that motion passes, Mayor Glassbell.
Thank you. Next item on our agenda, item number seven, is the 2020 audit presentation by our Director of Finance, Shani Wittenburden.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. Earlier this year, we awarded the annual audit to Watson Coon Ryan LLC out of Denver, and the completed document is on the city's website. Tonight, I am happy to introduce Ms. Kelly Watson with Watson Coon Ryan LLC, who will review the highlights from the 2020 audit. So Kelly, take it away.
Absolutely, nice to be here. I'm Kelly Watson. I'm one of the audit partners at Watson Coon Ryan. I was the partner in charge of the audit this year. In the interest of time, like Shani said, we're not going to go page by page through the financial statements. That said, if you guys have detailed questions, anything you want to go over after, I can give you my contact information. You're free to reach out at any time. Shani, I'm not seeing the ability to share. I do have a PowerPoint, but there's not a lot to it, so it's not critical that I share it. I could just go over the highlights of it, and if you guys have questions, let me know.
All right, any questions? Barbara?
Uh-uh.
Yes, if you would, go over it for us a little further.
Oh, absolutely. So, we do have, obviously, the statements available on the website. The city was required to have a yellow book audit this year, which is required when you spend over $750,000 in federal funds. The coronavirus funding was the large contributor to that, so we did look at that further, and I'll go into more details of that as we go on. Going through kind of the table of contents and just a high level, what's in your audit, the first item is the management discussion and analysis. If you're going to read only one part of the report, that's probably the most informative section to go through. It is prepared by the city, but it goes over the variances between this year and last year, the reasons why, what's going on with the city. It's a little more informal and a little more flexible in what's allowed to be in there. So it's three to five pages, it's a pretty quick read, and a very good overview of what's contained throughout the report. The first item that we contribute is our audit opinion. You guys received an unmodified audit opinion, which means it was clean, we didn't see anything concerning, and we were able to say that we believe these statements to be materially accurate. The first set of statements you'll encounter are the government-wide statements. These statements are the most business-like in terms of the method of accounting being used. These are accrual-based, so you'll see things like capital assets, you'll see long-term debt, accrued compensation, things of that nature. The ending net position for governmental funds was $84 million. The proprietary funds was $69.8 million, and combined, that's $154 million. Net position is a really critical measure because it's your cumulative running total of kind of the strength of the government. So the larger that number is, the stronger position you are in. We have seen a lot of governments that struggled a lot more during COVID. You all did a great job. We didn't see anything concerning. We do look at those numbers in terms of alerting us to any problems, and there was no indication of any issues in those areas. The next statements we see are the fund-level statements. This is a different basis of accounting, so the difference between those two sets of statements are those long-term adjustments. So fund-level statements don't show capital assets. If you spend money on a capital expenditure, it's run through current period expense. So there is a reconciliation between the two statements that shows you specifically what differences there are and what the amounts are. And we look at this in the same way, looking at the fund balance, which is your cumulative metric of how the strength of the funds are. Cumulatively, you have 22.7 million in your governmental funds and 69.8 million in your proprietary funds. The next statement's a new one for you guys. There was a new standard that came into effect last year under Gatsby 84. It's a fiduciary fund requirement, and it required that the sales tax funds you hold and pass through to other governments get recorded in its own separate statement. So that zeroes out from year to year, but you will start seeing that recurring going Following the fiduciary fund statements, you have the notes to the financial statements. This goes over the different accounting policies for all significant line items. It goes over the pension and how those amounts are determined, what assumptions are taken in there. It goes over different policies of the government. There were no significant changes to those notes from last year, but they can be very informative, especially if you're wanting to dig into one specific line item on those statements. Following the notes, we have required supplemental information. These are your budget-to-actual comparisons for the general fund and major special revenue funds, and then the pension tables, which are required under the standards. Following those statements, we go through the combining and individual fund statements. So this digs down into more detail on the individual funds that get combined into a non-major fund column on those higher-level statements at the front of the audit. Following the fund-level statements, we get into the single audit section. So now's a good time to pause, see if there are any specific financial-related questions. Single audit is kind of a different beast in its entirety, so I'll just give you a second to see if there was anything you guys wanted me to dig into.
I don't believe so at this point.
Absolutely. And it is worth noting on this, throughout this whole audit process, we review the responses we're getting, we look at the quality of the support we're getting for our questions, we consider whether we're getting any weird pushback, any conflicting statements. Everyone at the city was extremely helpful. They got us information quickly, it was consistent throughout the audit, so we didn't have any concerns as we got through our audit. In terms of it being a little later than we would have liked, I would attribute that mostly just switching auditors. It's always a pretty complicated process to start over from scratch, and so the process did take a little longer than we would have liked, but that wasn't due to any issues we were having with the city or the staff or any issues with the quality of what we were working with. In terms of the single audit section, like I said, this is due to having spent over $750,000 in federal funds. It falls into federal requirements that the audit be done with consideration for both compliance and internal controls. We do test the internal controls as they relate to the compliance. Internal controls that we identify during the financial statement audit, if there are any issues, we do need to identify them here. So you'll see two audit reports in a row. The first one's on internal controls, the second one's on compliance. We did have some findings. I do want to preface that with saying that's pretty common this year. It's kind of a universal issue with the COVID-related funding. There were a lot of changes that came out late. The guidance for how you could spend the money, how to report the money, changed all throughout the year. So while the money came out early in the year, they kept refining what it could be spent for, and that caused a lot of issues. So throughout our client base, throughout the industry in general, we are seeing a lot of that. While they are reportable findings, they're not anything that we are particularly concerned about, but do want to bring to your attention because they are reportable. For the internal control findings, one of them related to the audit adjustments we have to post as they relate to GAAP. That's largely those differences I was talking about between the government-wide statements and the fund-level statements. So those adjustments related to primarily capital assets and pension obligations. Some of that had to do with the switching of auditors, some of that has to do with them being fairly complex accounting issues, and most governments your size tend to have adjustments in those areas. And so I routinely see those findings, but that was our first one. It's considered a material weakness because of the size of the adjustments we had to post. The second finding was both an internal control finding and a compliance finding, and it had to do with our testing of the expenditures that were reimbursed under one of the coronavirus relief funding acts, and it had to do with the expenditure being submitted for reimbursement twice. So that got reported under both. And the third finding had to do with an allowable cost issue. This one was almost entirely due to the changing in regulations. When the city first decided to spend these funds, it appeared the regulations were going to allow it. As those regulations evolved over time, it became more apparent that that wasn't going to be allowed, and the request had already been submitted. So neither are hugely significant dollar items. The corrections are in process, and it seems like they're being responded to seriously, and changes will be made so that we won't see these recurring going forward. So that is an extremely fast run-through of the financial statements, but like I said, I'm happy to provide my contact information to anybody that is wanting to reach out to us separately, and if you have any questions, I'm happy to address them now.
Any questions?
To reiterate, all of this information is available on the city's website, so if somebody wants to look at the results of this or contact you, that your contact information is also present in that information.
Barbara, anything? Anthony, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, Doug, thank you.
All right. Is there anyone in the public that would like to make a comment? Seeing none, I would consider a motion.
I move to accept the annual financial audit for the year 2020 as presented.
I have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, we'll have a roll call vote.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Yes.
David Reed?
Yes.
Anthony Russo?
Yes.
And Mayor Glassbell, that motion passes.
All right, thank you very much.
Perfect.
The next item we have--
Thank you all, it was great working with you all.
Thank you. The next item we have is ordinance 2570 on second reading. Shani Wittenburden.
Good evening again. Yes, so this is second reading of the supplemental ordinance for 2021, so it covers costs or expenditures that we made from January 1st of this year, anticipated through December 31st of this year, as best as I could put together for you. These were items that were not anticipated during the original budget for 2021, and I'd be happy to go over each one of them with you again. There have been no changes from first reading, so whatever your pleasure is, that's how I will go, the direction I'm going.
Anthony, any questions?
No, thank you, Doug.
In that case, I would take any public comments. Seeing none, I'll bring it back here and I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move--
(cough) excuse me--
--to adopt ordinance 2570 on second reading as presented.
Second.
I have a motion, a second. We'll have a roll call vote.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Anthony Russo? Aye.
And that motion passes.
Shani, that wraps up the budget for, that was the last time. So we've approved the supplemental for 2021, and we had already approved the budget for 2022, right?
Correct.
Good job.
Thank you.
Thanks, Barbara.
Yeah, I'd like to say thank you, Shani, for all of your hard work, and your entire department has done an incredibly complex job with grace and dignity. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you all.
And it's always nice to hear that we have had a good audit. Next item, item number nine, is a new arts liquor license application. City Attorney, Chris Downey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before the city council is an application for a new arts liquor license for the Montrose Center for the Arts, located at 11 South Park Avenue for consumption on the premises. For this application, neighborhood has been defined as the city of Montrose. This is a public hearing for a new arts liquor license, and is incumbent upon the applicant to show current needs of the neighborhood, defined as the city are not currently being met by the existing facilities, and the adult inhabitants of the city wish to have this new establishment. The permit is in order, and the fees have been paid. From the city staff's review of the application, we've seen nothing that would prevent the council from issuing a license, notwithstanding this hearing. This council can make a decision at the end of this hearing or defer the decision for up to 30 days. At this time, I'll ask the applicant to step forward and introduce themselves to the council and announce their home address for the record.
While we're waiting, could, for the public's benefit, could you explain what an arts liquor license is and how that differentiates from any other bar or restaurant?
Yeah, absolutely. So an arts liquor license is actually only going to be given to a nonprofit that promotes the arts in some way, shape, or form. It is a little bit different, whereas they cannot promote the sale of alcohol on their premises, as well as they can only sell during the showing of the arts at that point in time.
You mentioned the comment showing during the arts, if they have arts on display all the time for sale, does that allow them to sell in all the time?
Under the Colorado regulations, yes.
Okay. Any other questions? Yes, would you like, he'll start with asking you a few questions.
Oh, if you can--
Start with your name and address.
Name and address.
My name is Jodeen Broskowak. My personal address, is that what you want?
Please.
3704 Mount Haven Court.
If you'd like, you can pull that mic down a little closer to you.
Oh, is that better?
Yeah.
Okay.
And thank you. Mr. Mayor, do you and the council, councilors wish to examine the petitioner at this point? Or would you like me to start with the preliminary questions?
If you would, why don't you go ahead?
Absolutely. Would you please first tell us about the Montrose Center for the Arts?
The center was designated as a 501(c)(3) in 2016. It's actually been in action since 2015, and then May 1st of 2019, we moved into our leased building. So we've been operating from that facility for the past three years. We are a full-time, all-inclusive art center. We show fine art, original artwork by local artists and some regional artists. We have First Friday art receptions that feature a guest artist whose show is up for that month. We rent all of the remaining gallery walls to artists who display and sell their work for a period of three months, or four months. We have a gift shop. We have art classes, so we have an opportunity for creative development with both adults and children. We teach classes to the children from Haven House and Partners, and we teach homeschool students. Our instructors primarily are retired professionals, just because they want to fill the need, keep their art experience and their instructor experience going forward. I really think that pretty much sums it up. It's a, it's a, we're open Tuesdays through Saturdays from 10 to 4:00. And by the way, our First Friday receptions, we have been operating under a art permit where we serve wine and every now and then a beer if somebody wants it. But that's been on, under a complimentary situation, because of course, we were not allowed to sell or ask for money in return. So we were limited to 15 dates in a year under that permit, and we've already used them up, and we're halfway through the year. So we felt like the next step would be to apply for a art license, not necessarily to be able to sell it, but so that we were, we had the freedom to make spirits available for other dates during the year when we had certain events. We have no intention of becoming a tavern or a saloon. Our, the liquor would be served only under certain situations where we might, we might possibly have like a themed event where we might sell some sort of a special drink to go along with that theme. We'll, we'll continue with the wine situation at our receptions, and I'm not really sure how we'll develop anything else, but we will not have daily sales or operate anything like that.
Sounds great. Do you intend on drawing customers from the city of Montrose?
Yes.
And that is why we determined the neighborhood for these hearings to be the city. Do you object to this determination at all?
I'm sorry?
Do you object to the determination that the neighborhood is the city?
No.
Okay. Do you think there's a desire on behalf of the inhabitants of the neighborhood for your establishment?
Yes, I personally went door-to-door to get the signatures on petitions, and I didn't have any negative response. Everybody was sort of happy about it.
And yes, we do have the petitions here. There were 69 signatures that were submitted. 55 of the signatures were determined to be valid and in support of the license, one of which had the comment of "support this." 14 signatures were determined to be insufficient, whether it be outside of the safety limits, insufficient address, failed to indicate age, and then a couple duplicate signatures. As I said earlier about the arts license, are you aware of the restrictions on the arts liquor license?
Yes.
Yes. And the city of Montrose is serious about enforcing the liquor laws of the state of Colorado. Would you please describe your familiarity with these laws?
I'm not particularly sure which specific law you want to know about, but we did, there were four of us that did take the bartender training, so that, and we all got our certificates so that we would, you know, know how to operate from that particular situation.
Very nice. Are you familiar with the underage drinking task force here in the Montrose area?
Task force? No.
Just that, there are, there may be underage patrons that are sent in to try to--
Oh, okay.
--obtain alcohol with, say--
Yes, we were told.
--insufficient ID. So you are aware of that?
Yes.
Okay.
We were told that.
So you're familiar with the liquor law education and server training classes, correct?
Yes.
You said you took those. Do you understand is the city's intention that all licensees in the city of Montrose and their servers attend these trainings?
Yes, I believe so. I'm not really sure who they are, but I know that that's a good idea.
Would you be willing to commit to the council that if your license is granted, that you as licensee managers and all servers attend such training within 30 days of issuance of the license if they're not already certified?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor, council. Do you have any further questions?
Barbara?
I do not have any further questions.
Anthony, do you have any questions?
No, I'm good, Doug, thank you.
All right. Right. One question I would have, when you're serving, you have a crowd in there, do you have some way to control, to make sure that a minor does not have access to the alcohol?
Yes. We have, we usually have a table set up with several of our members assisting that table. So, and it's like a one-on-one basis, it's not where several people are served at the same time. So, and because of the training that we've had, we, we know pretty much now what to watch for. And actually, we had one of our new people card somebody just the other night. It really was sort of a humorous thing, it wasn't, the person wasn't underage, but she did go through the drill, and she did it quite well. So, yes, I think we all know how to handle that.
If you have several people in there and people are milling around, do you have folks within the facility that would notice if someone was sharing a drink with a younger person?
Oh, yes.
Amy, do you have any questions on liquor permit?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. I think that takes care of all of those. Would you like a motion? Let me see if we have any public comment, I didn't ask that. Are there any persons in the audience that would like to speak to this? All right, David.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the new arts liquor license at 11 South Park Avenue for Montrose Center for the Arts for consumption on premise.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Please have a roll call.
Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
All right, thank you very much, and good luck to you folks.
Thank you for your time.
Item number 10 is council consideration of ordinance 2571 on second reading, an ordinance for the Montrose, Colorado, with district boundaries for the, each of the council members. Deputy Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor Glassbell. So this item has been discussed at two previous work sessions and was approved on first reading at the November 16th city council meeting. So with that in mind, I'll just provide a brief summary. In accordance with the city charger, city charter, excuse me, the city council boundaries must be adjusted after each census, and that's to make sure we maintain approximate equal population distribution throughout those city council districts. So the 2020 census results for the city of Montrose were released in August of 2021, and that showed a total population of 20,293 for the city, which would set a target for us of 5,073 residents per district. As I mentioned, this item was discussed at those previous work sessions and approved on first reading, and at that time, council had selected option seven as the boundary adjustment. That map was included in your packet for this meeting as Exhibit A2, the associated ordinance, excuse me. No subsequent changes have been made to the ordinance since that time, but with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. And if you have any additional questions? And if you have any additional questions? Amy, you have any questions on the districts?
No, but thank you.
Do we have anyone in the public that would like to speak to this? Seeing none, I will bring it back here and ask for a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2571 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second. Please have a roll call vote.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
All right. Item 11, City Council consideration of resolution 2021-28 authorizing the conduction of a mail ballot.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. So as you know, we are currently planning for the 2022 municipal election. Election day for that will be April 5th of 2022, and the first step in that process for us is the approval of a resolution authorizing that mail ballot election. So the city of Montrose has been conducting mail ballot elections since 1994, and we are really confident that this is an effective and thorough process through which we can conduct that election. We don't foresee any significant changes being made to our process from what was done in 2020, with the only exception being the inclusion of that city council boundary map that was just approved. This was presented at the November 15th work session, and no subsequent changes have been made since that time, but I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Any questions? Anthony, do you have any questions?
I'm good, Doug. Thank you.
Amy?
No, sir. Thank you.
All right. Is there any public comment? In that case, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that council adopt resolution 2021-28 as presented.
I'll second that.
I have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
All right. Thank you. Item number 12, Resolution 2021-29, is a resolution authorizing Colorado Department of Local Affairs grant for a police officer mental health support grant program. Kendall Kramer?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, City Council. I'm here tonight seeking your consideration to file a grant application with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs for the peace officers' mental health support program. This is a program that was created by Colorado Revised Statutes 24323501. The program was created to provide financial assistance to law enforcement agencies to provide mental health services, including on-scene response services to support peace officers handling of persons with mental disorders, counseling services to peace officers, assistance for development and implementation of policies to support peace officers who are involved in shootings or a fatal use of force, training and education programs to teach the, that teach the symptoms of job-related mental trauma and how to prevent that and treat such trauma, and peer support programs. The Montrose Police Department seeks $90,550 in grant funding to support a licensed counselor to oversee the department's peer support program, purchase a co-responder vehicle, and provide crisis intervention training for officers and co-responders. I'd like to make a note that you received an updated resolution this afternoon that increased the amount by $50. I was going through the budget and noticed that small error that we were missing $50 in the budget for one of the staff to be trained. The city has been a recipient of the grant in the past. In 2019, we received approximately $47,000 to purchase a vehicle for the mental health co-responder, as well as provided, provided emotional survival training for our, for our officers. Mental health issues remain a priority or a concern for our officers in the community and a public safety priority. I should note that the, the mental health, the, the co-responder program, the purpose of that is to de-escalate situations. A co-responder responds to situations to, to mitigate and de-escalate those. It was, the program was established in 2018 in partnership with the Center for Mental Health. The position is entirely paid for by the Center for Mental Health, and again, it allows that master's level mental health clinician to respond with officers. Prior to 2019, when we received the grant, the previous grant, the clinician was tied to our officers, and therefore, the officer would have to go to the hospital on occasion with the co-responder and the individual that was having the crisis. And so that tied that officer up and prevented him or her from responding to other calls. So with the purchase of that vehicle, they, the officers were able to respond to other calls, and that co-responder was able to be autonomous after they would respond together, but then after it was determined that the scene was safe, that officer would be able to, to go on. The purchase of a designated vehicle again has allowed that, the autonomy to happen. It's allowed the co-responder to deliver those patient services and complete follow-up visits, which was, was also a concern that those couldn't happen without that vehicle. Again, the program has shown that there is need for it, and there are actually now three clinicians for the program that are shared between the Montrose Police Department and the Montrose County Sheriff's Department. And so with the increase in the number of clinicians, as well as in the, in the number of responses that the departments make, there is once again a need for a second vehicle for the co-responder. The three co-responders allow a seven-day coverage. It's not 24 hours per day, but it is seven days per week. And so again, having the second vehi- vehicle will relieve those officers to allow them to respond to other calls. It'll also make sure too, that the right professional is on the scene to address the situation and to have the best possible outcome. I should note that the funding is also for the contractor or the consultant, the therapist, I guess you could say. It would be a consultant. It wouldn't be an employee of the city of Montrose. It would be through a contracted consultant situation there, and they would be licensed counselors. It would probably be, actually be two of those. Finally, funding is requested for the crisis intervention training for officers and co-responders. This training provides officers with awareness and knowledge of how to deal with individuals who are experiencing behavioral health issues or have been diagnosed with physical or mental health conditions. This helps officers recognize health issues and address appropriately without the use of force when practical. This training uses professional actors portraying incidents of individuals in crisis and allows officers to learn how to best respond. The resolution before you this evening allows us to file the grant application with the Colorado Department of Local Affairs. Commits us to spending these funds on the statutory priorities and to complete the grant reporting, acknowledges Tabor implications, the city of Montrose voters debrused grant funds from Tabor in 1996. It authorizes the city manager and staff to act on behalf of a grant agreement and to implement the grant. And I should also note that there is no match to this grant program. So with that, I can take any questions at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is this a competitive grant, or is this something that usually if we fill out the right forms and present it, that we will receive the money from?
I think there is some competitiveness to it, because I think the pot of money has gotten smaller. But I did read today that it is a first-come, first-served basis grant, and so the grant application, I believe, was just announced today. We got a message about a month ago to go through the process, get the resolution in place, which is required, and so we're pretty much set to go. So I think we'll probably be one of the first applications then, so I am hopeful with that. But I do think there is some competitiveness to it. I've seen, there's been amounts all the way from like $5,000 all the way up to $160,000 in the amount of funds that have been granted to different departments across the state.
And I think that also explains why you're bringing it to us tonight, when we talked about it yesterday at work session, kind of the rushed schedule.
Yes, that's correct. Thank you, Barbara, for bringing that up, Counselor. Yes, the, we weren't certain when the grant application was going to happen, but we were told that it was going to be a very short window of opportunity to apply, so that's why we wanted to, to get it here before the, the new year happens.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to thank you for being on top of it and being early.
Thank you.
Anthony, any questions?
Uh, no, I just want to say thank you as well, Kendall. Good work on that.
Thank you, Counselor.
And do we have any public comment? Anyone like to speak to this item? Not seeing anyone, I would accept a motion.
Mayor, I move to adopt resolution 2021-29 as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Please take a roll call. Yes.
Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ordinance on second reading, council considering ordinance 2572 on second reading. It's for the annexation of the Grace Community Church addition. Senior Planner, Amy Sharp.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. Start with sharing my screen here. So this is one you've seen several times before, so I'll kind of go through it briefly, and then if you have questions, you can let me know. This one is the Grace Community Church annexation, so they are wanting to annex this parcel, as you see here, that is completely surrounded by city limits. It's a little bit under three and a half acres, and the annexation is going to allow for future development and expansion of their church services. This property is currently surrounded by zoning that is R1A, R2, and R3, and their proposed zoning is the R3 medium-density district, because it fits best with the surrounding area, and churches, places of worship are allowed as a use by right in this zoning This slide just shows the annexation map. This is within our comprehensive plan, future land use map is designated as residential mixed density low, so it does fit nicely as well with what's allowed in that zoning district. It's in our growth area one, which just means that it's in the area that represents the most cost-efficient areas for the city to grow. And so as I noted, it is completely surrounded by city limits. An annexation agreement was not required for this one. An annexation impact report was also not required because it was less than 10 acres. And we do believe that this proposal is consistent with the public health, safety, and welfare, our city annexation policies, and the comprehensive plan, and therefore, we're recommending approval of both the annexation and the R3 medium-density district, which was also approved by the Planning Commission. That all, open to any questions.
Any questions, Council? Amy?
No, thank you.
Anthony, do you have any questions?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. In that case, I'll take any public comment. We have no public comment. I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move council adopt ordinance 2573 on second reading as presented.
I'll second that.
2572, excuse me.
And we have a motion and a second. Please vote. Roll call.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
And that passes.
All right. Ordinance 2573 on second reading. Council considering an ordinance 2573 on second reading, an ordinance of Montrose, Colorado, providing zoning for the Grace Community Edition, number two, as R3. Amy?
I don't have anything further to add on this one.
Anyone have any questions? In that case, I'll take a motion.
This time, I will make a motion that council approve, adopt ordinance 2573 on second reading.
Second. I have a motion and a second. Please vote by roll call.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
All right. The next item on our agenda this evening is item number 15, an ordinance 2574 on second reading. Council consideration of an ordinance 2574 on second reading, an ordinance of the Montrose, Colorado, authorizing the disposal of real property, Lot 1, Air Parkway Minor Subdivision. Amy Sharp?
And Mr. Mayor, I'm going to recuse myself as I did on the first reading for a potential conflict.
All right. Thank you. Amy?
Do you want me to wait till he leaves her?
You will come back, right?
So we've talked about this a couple times in great length. This is as part of the Stryker Land Exchange deal that we've discussed. The city is requesting to dispose real property owned by the city of Montrose located up at Air Parkway. The minor subdivision has been completed since the last time we met and recorded, so that's been finalized. And the only thing that's really changed is that we were going to convey this parcel via a quitclaim deed, and we changed that to a special warranty deed at the request of the applicant. This land exchange basically exchanged this parcel of land, which is Lot 1 of the Air Parkway Minor Subdivision, with a parcel of land that's located along Chapita Road, right by the lake, that the city would then own. So this specific part is just the disposal of real property, but just giving background information to kind of refresh your memory on what that Stryker Land Exchange was about. And I'll open it up to any questions you may have.
Laura?
And I don't know if you would answer this or the attorneys, but what's the difference between a special warranty deed and a, what was the other one? A general, a quitclaim?
Quitclaim deed.
The, a warranty deed always warrants something, and in this case, it's title. So they're concerned that we have the title authority to do this, and it's, there's no question about title in this property, so that's why even though we normally do quitclaim deeds, there is no reason not to accommodate the request.
So since we're, the methodology of the dispersal isn't specified in the ordinance, it isn't really critical for it, and we don't require going back and doing the first reading, even though we've changed the method of dispersal?
That is correct.
Thank you.
Amy, do you have any questions?
No, sir. Thank you.
Anthony, do you have a question?
I'm good. Thank you.
All right. In that case, I would accept a motion. Yeah, we'll take public comment. All right. Take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt ordinance 2574 on second reading as presented.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Yes.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
And I would point out that we had one missing because of potential conflicted interest on it. We could call David back in. It's an ordinance 2575 on first reading. This is changing the zoning by the new police building. Mr. Reese Rice? Reese? Which way? Rice. Reese. I'm going to get that right yet while these nights.
You'll get it one day. I do have a presentation to share, if I can be promoted to a panelist. So while I'm pulling that up, as you've probably noticed, there's some construction going on next door. Of course, you know that's for the new Montrose Public Safety Complex. To give you a brief background on some of the planning applications that we've processed thus far, we have undergone a site development application process in order to approve the building itself. As you know, that's an administrative process, and it's just approved at a staff level. Also, because the building is constructed across multiple lots, or rather, what was multiple lots, we also recorded an amended plat in order to combine those several lots into one parcel. That was also approved administratively. I'll pull up the presentation here. So that new parcel is what you can see here in orange on this map here, so you know where it is. With that combination of parcels, we now have a single parcel that actually has two zoning districts. You can see that in this map here. Most of this new parcel is Zone P, Public District. That's what you can see in green. A small portion of it is currently Zone B1, Central Business District, as shown here in purple. That area is approximately 0.32 acres in size. Generally, it's a best practice to avoid allowing one building to span across two or more zoning districts, so that's why we have this application before you tonight in order to ensure that the entire parcel is Zone P, Public District, as shown here. This application did go before the Planning Commission, and they made a recommendation in favor of the rezone on November 10th. This here is the legal description of only the portion of the property currently Zone B1. I'll skip re-zoning. Uh, I'll skip reading all of that, if that's okay with everyone. Uh, when considering rezone applications, any changes to the official zoning map shall be allowed only if the amendment is not adverse to the public health, safety, and welfare, and the amendment is in conformity with the master plan. Uh, city staff finds that these criteria have been met in order to support the rezone to P Public District. P zoning is intended to provide for public, nonprofit, or charitable uses that provide a local service to the people of the community on a regular basis. Uh, obviously, law enforcement and public safety fall into that description well, and of course, the property is owned by the city. So we feel that P zoning is the most appropriate designation for the land. In our comprehensive plan, the future land use map shows this area as public, which is used to suggest potential locations for amenities, including public buildings. Uh, staff finds that this proposal meets all rezone criteria as set forth in section four, four twenty-nine of our municipal code. Uh, it meets the intent of the P Public District, and is in compliance with our comprehensive plan. Uh, it's comparable with surrounding uses in the area, and staff recommends approval. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions?
Just for clarification, the reason we're doing this is that there, before the construction of our new public safety complex, that there was a bank there. And that was the reason that the zoning's a different zoning for that particular little area.
Correct, the city purchased uh the property, and so uh we just want to ensure that's all one, within one zoning district.
Barbara, anything?
Nope.
Anthony, do you have any questions?
No, thank you.
Amy, anything?
No, sir, thank you.
All right, I would hold a hearing on this. We open up the hearing, do we have any comments from anyone? We have no comments, I'll close the hearing. And I'll accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to pass ordinance twenty-five seventy-five on first reading as presented.
Have a motion, I have about a second. Second. I have a motion, second, please take a roll call.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Barbara Bynum. David Reed. Anthony Russo.
Aye.
That motion passes.
Thank you. Item seventeen, ordinance twenty-five seventy-six on first reading. This is a consideration of an ordinance representing the city's municipal code. And assistant attorney, Chris.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, so what this is going to do is add the definition of marketplace facilitators uh under the hotel room tax. Um, what this is gonna do is going to make marketplace facilitators responsible to collect and remit any excise taxes under uh, under this um, this section. Uh, currently, there are only, uh, there are two separate entities responsible for taxation on certain transactions made through a marketplace facilitator. Um, and this is just gonna streamline this, uh making one entity taxable for that one transaction. Uh, so what a marketplace facilitator is, i- it's going to be a third party who facilitates sales uh between a buyer and a seller through their marketplace. Uh, they do this by advertising whatever the seller is selling, uh collecting payment from the buyer, and then uh transmitting that on to the uh, to the seller. Um, again, wha- what, right now, um, for purposes of hotels who uh advertise through a marketplace facilitator, they're currently liable for the hotel room excise tax, um whereas the actual marketplace facilitator, they're going to be responsible for the sales tax. So, uh, in that instance, i- it just makes sense to have one entity collect all of the tax and then remit it to us. Um, additionally, something I didn't uh say during work session, uh this will also uh affect restaurants selling through marketplace facilitators, uh they're under that same burden right now, um where the sales made through uh let's say Grubhub, or um Uber Eats, something like that. Uh, they're responsible for the excise tax i- in those sales, whereas the marketplace facilitator, they're going to be responsible for the sales tax on that. Um, so I have made an edit uh between work session and today, uh I changed it from hotel room tax to excise tax in there. And I did highlight that change in the packet, uh on the redline version. Um, so i- it's really for clarity, um and then if any other excise taxes are put into this section, it's automatically, if there's a marketplace facilitator facilitating these kinds of sales, they'll be responsible for that excise tax as well. So, any questions?
Any questions, Barbara?
So, excise tax, we currently only have two, the lodging tax and the restaurant tax, and those both are, they're not sales taxes, they're excise taxes.
Correct. Correct.
Anthony, you have any questions?
No, I, I think that, uh, I'll just make a comment that this is a really, really good program as someone who is a, you know, travels quite a bit and sees how this impacts the businesses, I think this is really gonna help the local businesses streamline process.
All right, thank you, Amy, any questions?
No, thank you.
All right, in that case, I'll hold a public hearing. Do we have anyone wanting to speak on the public hearing? If not, I'll close the public hearing, and I would consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we pass ordinance twenty-five seventy-six on first reading as presented.
Second, uh? I have a motion and a second, please vote, roll call.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
David Reed. Anthony Russo.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
All right, thank you. Let's see, the next item is item eighteen. Twenty-twenty-two sanitary sewer cured in place pipe bid award, Dave Breeze.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, um, tonight, I'm bringing forward to you the approval of a contract um within Citiform Technologies for extension of their contract um for cured in place sewer pipelining. Um, not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. This project was um, well, this process was bid out um in two thousand twenty, in two thousand twenty with um unit prices to establish a cured in place um lining program. And was renewable for addition, up to an additional three years. So, this year is the second renewal of that contract um for the two thousand twenty-two project. Um, this project um focuses on Townsend Avenue, um replacing those or lining those sewers um that are under the portion of Townsend that's gonna be rehabilitated here by C dot um this summer. So we're trying to get ahead of that, get all those pipes um into top notch condition, so that when they do the overlay and stuff, we don't have subsequent excavations or repairs on those lines. Now, the cured in place lining process, as you guys are a little bit familiar with, because we've done it a number of times, it's a um resin impregnated felt that is um slid into, inverted into the sewer line, and then cured using a steam curing process, so that it minimizes traffic interruptions and disruptions and stuff. Um, and doesn't actually dig up any other thing. All of the re- um reestablishment of the services is all done robotically from within the pipe. So this is a process that's been around for about thirty, thirty-five years. Um, and has been very successful in maintaining those sewer lines at a lower cost than digging them up and replacing them. With that, I will take any questions.
I'm just curious, okay, so we have cured in place pipelining, but then we also have the pipe bursting, and then we also have the old fashioned way of trenching it and taking them out. When do you decide to use pipe bursting versus the cured in place?
Um, pipe bursting oftentimes is the pipe is inadequately sized.
Okay.
Sometimes if it's a, a six inch pipe that was installed as six inch, but needs to be upsized to an eight inch, that would be a prime candidate for pipe bursting. Um, whereas cured in place lining, if it's got adequate capacity for the services on it, it's a lower cost um process of doing it. So there's some economics that are looked at, as well as functionality and sizing of the pipes.
Cool, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Anthony, do you have any questions?
I'm good, thank you.
Amy, do you have any questions on it?
No, sir, thank you.
One, I would have a question, David, uh from a life cycle standpoint, how is the cured in place hold up?
I think it somewhat depends on the um condition of the existing pipe that we're, that we're putting it into. Um, in a pipe that is highly ovalled or deteriorated and structurally is pretty, pretty compromised, um probably has a life cycle of twenty-five to thirty years of additional life on that pipe. Um, if we have a pipe that's in round condition, that hi- has pretty good strength and stuff, I think you could probably easily see fifty to sixty years additional life out of that.
If we got to a point, do we ever redo that as far as a second in cured in place lining?
Um, I have not been aware of any additional processes where we've had to insert another sock or another liner inside of that pipe. Um, and again, I've been, I've done cured in place pipe back in my previous job back in the eighties. Um, and all of those pipes are still in service today.
All right, thank you. I would accept any public comment. Seeing none, in that case, I will take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the renewal of a contract with Insitu Form Technologies LLC in the amount not to exceed two hundred and fifty thousand dollars for cured in place lining of sanitary sewers.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please take a vote.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Barbara Bynum. David Reed. Anthony Russo.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Thank you, David. Item nineteen, Ford vehicle person, purchase. And that's going to be Jim Scheid giving us the information this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, uh, so yeah, I have a uh purchase recommendation before you for twenty Ford vehicles from Siltar Motors for a total of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents. Now, this is for nine replacement vehicles and eleven additional vehicles to our fleet. Um, all of these are included in our two thousand twenty-two budget. Um, and the replacement portion of that is uh budgeted in our fleet portion of the budget, and the rest are in the divisions that would be receiving those additional vehicles. Um, this is a total savings of a hundred and four thousand dollars um across all different budgets. And some of that savings is recognized into the fleet fund itself. Um, but other than that, there's been no changes since we discussed this at work session, so I would take any other questions if there are any.
Any questions?
No questions, I would just note that um we only received two um qualified and complete bids um for this, and they were from the Front Range in Texas.
That's right.
Yep.
Anthony, any comments?
No, sir, thank you.
Mr. Reed, anything? Amy, do you have any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
All right. I would take any questions from the public. Seeing none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of twenty Ford vehicles from Siltar Har Motors for the total purchase price of eight hundred and fifty-six thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-two cents as presented.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, please roll call.
Doug Glassbell.
Yes.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Barbara Bynum.
Yes.
David Reed.
Aye.
Anthony Russo.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
All right, thank you. Our next item is item twenty, equipment purchase and sole source waiver request, Jim Scheid, nice tie.
Thank you, um, yes, so this is for um two trash trucks, we call refuse trucks, a- and two vector trucks from Ferris Machinery out of Grand Junction. Um, the total purchase for all four of those is uh one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Uh, this also is one replacement of each and one additional of each, and so that's budgeted very similar as the four vehicles in in that half of that is in the uh fleet replacement, and half of that is in the um, the budgets of the division receiving the vehicles. Um, and in this, in this case, we use the cooperative purchasing agreement to uh utilize government pricing available for the LaBrie body portion of the um, of the trash truck. Um, and, and that also is co- compatible with the rest of our uh trash truck fleet, the um, we are changing the body type on our trash trucks to LaBrie, and we have two of them currently, so this would be our uh third and fourth one. Um, and then for the purchase through Ferris Machinery for the Peterbilt truck and the purchase itself, that's where the sole so- sole source waiver comes in, um in that um Ferris Machinery is the um regional distributor for LaBrie, and uh we wouldn't be able to purchase from anybody else anyway, and to utilize that uh government pricing, uh we would need to go through Ferris. They are the regional rep for Peterbilt as well, and that i- is standardizing in our fleet as, as well. Our trash trucks, vectors, um dump trucks were standardizing to uh, to Peterbilt. Um, so with this one, nothing else has changed on this since we discussed at work session either, um but I would be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Jim, you might comment on the government, government pricing on these, just to help clarify that.
Yeah, so um LaBrie um entered into a cooperative purchasing agreement that um allows government agencies to um use the same pricing um throughout, so um it's, it's a um quantity pricing that they offer, and it's only available to government agencies that um uh purchase many of them. So throughout the country, obviously, they sell many, many vehicles, and they're, therefore, we're utilizing a lower cost.
Right, thank you. Any questions, Barbara? Anthony, do you have any questions?
No, Doug, thank you.
Amy, would you have any question?
No, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Then I would accept any public comment. And we have none, I would accept a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to uh approve a sole source waiver in the purchase of two refuse trucks and two vector trucks from Ferris Machinery for the total purchase price of mil- one mi- excuse me, one million, nine hundred and fifty thousand, four hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-four cents as presented.
I have a motion, about a second.
Second.
I have a motion, second, please take a roll call.
Doug Glassbell.
Aye.
Dave Frank.
Aye.
Barbara Bynum.
Aye.
David Reed. Anthony Russo.
Aye.
And that motion passes.
Next is item number twenty-one, Police Department Building Fitness Equipment Purchase, Jim Scheid.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council, last one for tonight. Um, this is a purchase from um advanced exercise um for equipment, um exercise equipment of Lifetime Fitness and Hammer Strength brand. Um, and this is for the um Montrose Public Safety Complex project that was mentioned earlier tonight. Um, and this is an owner provided item for that construction project. Um, it's provided by us as the owner for a couple of reasons, uh one is cost savings in providing um some equipment um throughout not having to pay a markup to a contractor to provide it, and also, again, to utilize government pricing through a cooperative purchasing agreement. Um, and that's what um this type of equipment qualifies for through sale, and this um through advanced exercise is available through a cooperative purchasing agreement, um and again, we're um utilizing that pricing available to government agencies. Um, and so that is one reason why uh this equipment was selected, but also, this was selected because um similar equipment, and in some cases, the exact same equipment is utilized at our rec center here in Montrose, and uh provided a very good example for our police department and, and their operations and their training, and um we're a- we're able to use that as a, a very good um example and, and source of information. Um, so this, this equipment fits our needs um and, and is a good, a good suit for the police department. Um, it also potentially opens up future opportunities for um cost savings when it comes to maintaining or repairing the equipment, because a, um, it will require a special um, um vendor for that service, and the, and the rec center is currently using um somebody for that service, and we may be able to partner on that in the future. Um, and so this is an anticipated cost uh for the um Public Safety Complex project, and um this, this would be tracked as part of the overall cost of the project. Um, and, and we did check to the electrical layout of the area, council, councillor Bynum mentioned um, you making sure that their electrical is available, not only in location of the equipment, and it, but in alternate locations. Um, and we did check that, there, uh, there is multiple sources um in that room to change layout if that ever were to, to occur. Um, so with that, I would be happy to answer any questions, and I know Blaine is here as well, and can answer any specific questions about the equipment itself, if, if there are any.
Barbara?
No.
Um, just as clarification, that this is not going to be exclusively for use of by the police force, but it's also gonna be available to other city employees as well?
That's correct, yes.
Thank you.
Um, I think there'll be a um training procedure for um, for all people to utilize the equipment. Um, and then there'll be uh scheduling uh for use of that, um I know the police department will have certain times that they will utilize it for their training, and then uh when it's available for others, uh I think it would be open to city staff.
Excellent, thank you.
And I think it's good to point out, in the design of the building, we did design the- And I think it's good to point out in the design of the building, we did design the building with this in mind to begin with, so it's not.
Yes, this, this was.
Amy, do you have any questions?
No, sir, thank you.
Anthony?
No, sir, thank you.
I would take any public comments? In that case, I'll consider a motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the purchase of Lifetime Fitness Hammer Strength Fitness Equipment from Advanced Exercise for a total of $71,551.60 as presented.
Second. I have a motion, a second. Roll call, please.
Doug Glassbell?
Aye.
Dave Frank?
Aye.
Barbara Bynum?
Aye.
David Reed?
Aye.
Anthony Russo?
Aye.
And that motion passes.
All right, thank you. Any staff reports? Bill, anything?
Yeah, I think Chief Hall has some updates he wanted to give the group. I want to give a little update first and then I'll have Chief Hall come up and then any other department heads that might want to update City Council on recent happenings. But there was an article that went out recently talking about our city budget and I just wanted to clarify a couple of things that were in there that were a little bit misleading based on some of the language that was used. During our public budget open house and during our meetings where we've talked about next year's budget, we've talked a lot about the economy being great here in the community and we've seen double digit growth on the sales tax and use tax side of things for the last couple of years. Chaney is always giving us a sunshine report, which we're really thankful for. Unfortunately, in, in the article, there was, it was a little bit contradictory in some of the language that came out. So I just wanted to reiterate that the economy is great. Sales and use tax is up and has been up and is expected to be up again next year. We had a discussion with the person writing the article and I talked a little bit about the percentage of our overall revenues that come from sales and use tax. And when you look at the pie chart, it's usually about 85 to 87% of our revenues come from sales and use tax. We talked about the injection of the ARP money in the CARES Act funds and how that's lowered our percentage of our overall pie of revenue to about 80% because of that influx of federal money. Those are just a couple of years and then it'll be going back to that 85, 87% range. So in the article, they left out percentage in the wording. So it made it sound like our sales and use tax was going down. And I just wanted to clarify and make sure nobody misunderstood that. It's not going down, just the overall portion of our revenue is less for sales and use tax because of that federal funding that's coming in. And I can also answer any other questions you might have.
No questions, Mr. Bill, but I'd like to take this opportunity to also point out to our citizens and remind them that we are the largest city in Colorado that supports itself on sales tax revenues and we do not have a property tax in the city, something I think we should be very proud of.
Yeah, I think we're really proud of having a streamlined government here. We provide the most service possible with the least number of people and we take care of those people that we do have by trying to keep up with the market the best we can. And so we are really proud of being a city that can lead by example here in Colorado.
I would also like to point out that during our budgeting process, that we don't plan on these bonus bumper years that we've had this last year, that our budgeting process is very conservative. We don't plan on the windfalls. We plan on reliable sources of funding and we plan on our consistent basis, the information that's provided by our excellent financial staff, that we don't, we don't do pie in the sky budgets. Our budgets are very solid, down to earth and very consistent.
They're also all available online. So if you love digging into city budgets, they are there. And I know that our city manager and our finance director love talking about the budget. They're always there when we have questions and I know they would love and entertain any questions from the public as well.
Anthony, any comments?
No, thank you, Doug.
Any other questions, any comments, Bill, anything additional? All right, Chief Hall?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I just have a couple of updates for you tonight. First of all, I wanted to give you a building update, public safety building update. And so you're going to see the exterior of the building starting to change. If you haven't noticed, they are laying the brick for the exterior of the building. And if you'll notice, the, I think it's really cool, the color scheme, they got it just perfect. It really matches the downtown civic look and, and across the, what City Hall kind of communicates and to include the arches. And you don't really understand that until you, you see it. And so internally, inside the building, the steel studs are all framed in and they are almost unpouring concrete except for one section in the Kemaid Bay. So that's coming along very, very nicely. Here in the future, I think as the building is finished, we definitely want to, while there will be no pictures, we definitely want to give community tours for the inside of the building to make sure that everyone sees the inside of it and really how it's going to support our police department. So with any, with that, I just wanted to give a building update. I've got a couple of other updates, but I can certainly answer any questions to the building as it stands now.
I don't think we have any.
Okay, awesome. So number two, I wanted to read you an email real quick. I received this from Mandy Stolsteimer. She's the Wesco Communications Director. And this really is a commendation for our, our Wesco dispatchers, which rarely get commended. They're kind of working in the background and they're awesome people. Our Montrose Police Department staff and then the Montrose Fire Protection District staff. It reads that on December 6th, at 4:07 hours, and this is one of the dispatchers that's writing this, "I received a call from a citizen in the city of Montrose who had received a call from his wife at a residence in the city telling him that she and their four young children were all sick and could not move." "The husband started to, was en route to the house from his work. As soon as I had received the call, Troy with Wesco paged out fire and EMS and MPD. And then we called the resident inside the home who I immediately found to be very ill. I managed to convince her to get herself and her four children to evacuate the house. And while I was doing so, Troy was handling the fire and EMS radio traffic. When MPD arrived, the front door of the residence was open and I already advised MPD of possible carbon monoxide emergency and they took protective measures before entering, thanks to Officer Taylor Dynas's directions. Other officers on scene were Jordan Hewitt, Jamie Kent, and Alondra Nianbaka. Officer Hewitt made contact with one patient in the basement of the residence just as she had collapsed. When Montrose Fire Protection District arrived, they advised that there were gas readings inside the residence and I contacted Black Hills Energy and advised them of the emergency. All five occupants of the residence were transported to Montrose Memorial Hospital breathing in two separate ambulances. I'd like to commend all MPD officers, Montrose Fire Protection District units, Troy with the dispatcher, and each individual who played a large part in the survival of these five victims." And so I'd like to echo that and I just thought that was such a good news story. It could have certainly been a lot worse. And I think it's a reminder to our public to please check your furnace. And also, they're so cheap and easy to buy and use a carbon monoxide alarm in your house if you don't have one. I think it's a good time with winter here now to remind our public of that very, very important thing, so. And then lastly, I just wanted to thank, if you'll notice, I think we had four different police department related items on the agenda tonight and I didn't present. And it, it really speaks well to our entire city staff and everyone that supports the police department's programs. Our mental health co-responder program is, that's increasing and growing. If you all don't know, Commander Cox, who's here tonight, actually coordinates and oversees that program and he does an excellent job. But really, we're supported by our entire city staff. And just to end tonight, also, as we end the year from the police department, thank you to our city council and our city management team too for supporting all of us and everything that we do with, as far as the police department. So, thank you.
I think it's good to point out that that's why you called it public safety. You don't just write tickets, you do save people's lives and help folks out. So I think that's a very great point. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Amy?
No, sir, thank you.
Anthony?
I'm good, thank you.
Anything else, Chief? All right, thank you very much. Stephen, do you have anything? Ann?
No, thank you.
I guess we've just about covered. Everybody else had a chance. Are there any other questions anyone has? All right, how about city council comments?
I think I'd just like to repeat what I said at work session yesterday. What a magnificent job that the city staff did with the Christmas parade, parade of lights this past week. I think it was pretty obvious that all those who attended enjoyed it and it was a safe event. Thanks very much to the Montrose PD. And I'd like to thank a few specific people here and I know I'm going to leave some out and I apologize if I do. But special thanks to Kaylee Rotten at OBT, Sergeant Brian Rumbah with the PD, Dan Wayne at Public Works, Blaine Hall and the entire PD. Mayor Glassbell for your excellent judging. And Mayor Protim, Dave Frank for your excellent emceeing and judging. Youth Council, Mayor Gunnison Clamp for his judging. Commissioner Sue Hansen from Montrose County was there as one of the judges and we appreciate her being there and thank her for that. Harrison Hall, who was there to assist on the stand with his whiteboard. And just all of the city staff for an outstanding job and thank you very much. You, you, you are the lifeblood and we, we thank you and appreciate you.
A lot of help from Public Works organization also. And I believe you had some assistance from the Sheriff's Department, isn't it?
I'd like to also mention one of the other, the other judges, Donnie Morales.
That's right.
Yeah, so Donnie did a great job as well.
Any other council comments?
Yes, we, we are not meeting again this month because of the holiday. And so this is our last meeting where we have Stephen Alcorn joining us. And I just want to thank him for eight years of service to the city of Montrose and its citizens. And I know that he and his wife are looking forward to their next chapter. I know he plans to get a lot of skiing in, in the immediate future and look forward to seeing what his next chapter brings him and would really like to thank him.
Thank you, Stephen.
I stole my thunder, that's okay.
Anthony, do you have any comments?
No, other than to thank everyone for, you know, and Greg for the great work getting us plugged in remotely. There was a time we couldn't do this, so I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sure you were someplace where you weren't freezing while we were judging. I know. Any other council comments? Then I would take a motion adjourned. I have a motion adjourned. We're finished for tonight. See you next year. Thank you.